And welcome to our one o'clock officially one oh two work session for the Cleveland City Council. Today, Monday, August the 25th. We are grateful that you all are here. We have quite a few special recognitions as our beginning of our agenda today. And we will begin with a couple of heroes and some words by Chief Hero himself, Chief Mark Gibson. And Chief, thanks for being here today and for bringing so many of your wonderful team members with you, including the newly upgraded Captain West. I saw her earlier. Congratulations, Eevee.
All right, so I'd like to introduce to you Officer Jordan Martin and Daniel Swartser. You guys will, I'm gonna walk up here. So on Saturday, May 31st, 2025, the Cleveland Police Department responded to assist Bradley County Sheriff's Office deputies about a call of a possible drowning at Pleasant Cove Place Southwest. This incident involved a two-year-old child and a mother. Within minutes, Cleveland Police Officer George Martin and several county deputies arrived on the scene. Without hesitation, Officer Martin entered the water to rescue the victims. He was able to reach the child first, handing him off to a Bradley County deputy and then returning to assist the mother. The deputy then passed the child on to Cleveland Police Officer Swartser. They immediately began rescue efforts until EMS personnel arrived. The child, who was conscious of crying while being transported by ambulance, was transported by EMS and later airlifted to Chattanooga for advanced medical care. Officer Martin, being fully submerged during the rescue, despite losing equipment in the process, he placed his lives, uh, his lives above the, or, he placed his life, the lives of the victims above his own safety. Officer Swartser not only assisted with the child's care, but also provided translation services on the scene to help gather critical information for first responders. Their bravery, quick thinking and selflessness undoubtedly saved lives. These officers exemplified the highest standards of the Cleveland Police Department. The Cleveland Police Department commends Officer Martin and Officer Swartser for their extraordinary lifesaving actions during this horrific event. On Friday, August 15th, 2025, Officer Martin was selected and named Officer of the Year by Tennessee Associations of Chiefs of Police for his heroic efforts. Officer Martin and Officer Swartser will also be recipients of the Cleveland Police Department Lifesaving Award. But I want to congratulate both of those officers. And also just want to point out that I think the only difference here is I think we'd have the same result. It's just that Officer Martin got there first before Officer Swartser to go into the water. So I have no doubt that both these young men would have reacted the same no matter what. And also want to point out that this was a call that was in the county. Uh, so these guys didn't even have to go. They, they went out and risked their, their safety and well-being. And, uh, you know, as great as this is, our men and women do this, uh, do things similar to this on, on a weekly, monthly basis. And, uh, but I will congratulate them and, uh, honor them today for their service.
Officer Martin? On behalf of the Cleveland City Council, Officer Martin, we wanted to congratulate you on your commendations as Officer of the Year 2025 for not just your everyday efforts, but this heroic. And we, on behalf of the entire city council, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it.
There you are. Officer Swartser, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for diving in, both of you. Grateful. Sure. Why don't you guys come stand over here? And I'll look short and stand next to you. I'll stand in front of Tom. That won't be a problem.
On three. One, two, three. Let me take one more. One, two, three.
Okay, sorry. One, one, one here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Seven missing. Good.
Daniel, who says Officer of the Year, so we'll get you one more just for heroics.
Thanks, guys. Good job.
All right. And if I could have Dr. Stevens and Dr. Pritchard join me as well. We have another special presentation. And it looks like Mr. Michael Ritchie needs to be up here with us. Is he yourself? All right. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Are you doing well?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right, so we have commendations suitable for framing. On behalf of the Cleveland City Council, they're all here today in special appreciation of Cleveland High School for being recognized for your aviation program at the state level. Awarded a $22,000 grant to provide introductory and training flights. Sorry, I didn't have to.
That was Mr. Gary. That's right.
Hi, Mr. Gary.
I'm the aviation expert.
You don't need to fly an airplane.
We'll let you weld it.
And in case the airplane needs repair, awarded for your welding technology program, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Welding workforce grant from the American Welding Society Foundation to enhance equipment and expand certification opportunities. You were also honored, Mr. Ritchie, by your peers in the American Welding Society as Section Education for your skill, leadership and dedication to shaping the next generation of welders. Gentlemen, uh, it goes without saying, we are so grateful for your efforts. We want to offer these commendations to both of you for these grants that you received. And I'm thankful to be able to do this on behalf of the Cleveland City Council because every grant dollar that you earn is one less dollar we have to give you. Counsel, any comments?
Yes. Yeah, I'd just like to say, I got the opportunity to visit and try the full motion sim with some of the other ones. And I'm very impressed with not only the instructor, but, uh, the class and what you have going on there. It's, it's great that students have that opportunity because it's, it's a, I mean, it's a great career path. This isn't just a, a class at high school. This is something that can go on for their entire life and puts them in a great spot, uh, for, for their whole life. Thank you.
Thank you. I think they want us to go to the principal's office.
One other thing I would like to say with, with Dr. Elliott, too, and in the city schools, Robert. This is just a, a thing that vocational schools, you always think of Bradley being vocational, but Cleveland, I would encourage people to go and see what the vocational programs they have in there. Just not welding, nursing and everything else. It is a, it is a live and well programs in that part. And like, like off said, too, uh, you know, it's, it's a career path people get into. So it's a, it's an eye-opener when I went and I didn't realize how much y'all offered.
I'm gonna tell you what my sim score was. We did not land well.
Thank you.
Green's got U T orange and Raider blue all over the same time. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Congratulations. Joe, we need to get like a wireless mic up here just so we can wander around like Phil Donahue. Oh, in the new one. Okay. Some people don't know who Phil Donahue is. I just realized. Dustin? All right. I think now it's time for us to honor some Whirlpool Acquisition team members. I will ask Mr. Fivas to lead us into that acknowledgement.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I want to have Kathy Andrews, Taylor Co., Seth Sumner, Jonathan Joe, Dustin told me to, told me to come, come forward. I appreciate it. Doug Barry, please come forward a little bit.
The award-winning Doug Barry.
Award-winning. That, this really all started, you can come stand up over, you can be over here. You can stand right there. This all started in 2012 when we had the opportunity to move forward. Doug Barry and many people were working with Whirlpool to, uh, find out what the next steps in this process were. Took a long time to get there for, for just a lot of different reasons. Mayor Brooks came in and applied the right amount of pressure and got them, which really helped of taking down the buildings over there, which really opened up the doors to purchasing this property. But really, um, there's been an amazing amount of work that has been done on, on purchasing this property. As you know, it's, it's not as simple as going out and just purchasing a piece of property. It's going and making sure that, uh, that we have a plan for environmental cleanup, making sure that there's no liability for the city, uh, making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. And throughout this process, um, Kathy Andrews really led the, the charge on a lot of the Brownfield investigation with our team from S M and E. They did an amazing job of trying to identify what was there and how was doing that. She was also our lead person talking to TDEC. And then there was a whole nother collaborative team that helped with drafting and communicating with Phoenix Investors. We, we went back and forth probably at least 200 times on different aspects of, of this. And it was just an all-team approach. Don't know how else to, uh, to really articulate it. But this is, this is truly teamwork at its best. You know, now that the sale has closed, um, I think that want to recognize a lot of the hard work. It was by far the most complex and probably the most ups and downs and, uh, you know, stops and starts and three steps backwards and three steps forwards and whatever analogies you want to use. It was, uh, it was, uh, really amazing. But I, I want to, to recognize just the, the technical performance of, of our staff members for, uh, doing things that we had never really done in Cleveland before. And, uh, and, and just all the pieces came together and it was, it was because of these people really came up and did a great job. If you could come and stand up here up front after, in one moment, any questions or comments from the elected officials?
Comments from the council? I can just say that it, it has been the most complex and long effort in, including anything I had the pleasure of doing in Nashville. It, it truly, truly has been almost every week and in some cases every day, there's been some kind of communication. I think Joe's number of 200 communications is low. I think that was just in one week. I've never seen anything like it. And last week or week before last, closing was truly, truly a transformational transaction for the city of Cleveland. This is a generational change that our children and grandchildren will reap the benefits of your work. And so on behalf of the council, we are very grateful.
And to add on this, please go ahead.
So, thank you very much. I, I listened to you talk, Kevin. I remember you came. When this started even eighteen, nineteen years ago, Zach Womp and the FEMA honeys and the flood plan. So I'm thinking eighteen, nineteen years in second district, I've been following the water. This is a day to celebrate. But tomorrow, a lot of work ahead of us. Okay? Just, just so you know, enjoy the day.
Just, just, just today?
Just today. You know, I think there's so much work. You know that, right?
On behalf of the city council, you get one day.
One, one person that is not, uh, hasn't been discussed is Travis Henry. There were a number of deed issues with this. He had to actually go back to the 1880s.
Dixie Foundry.
And look at every single transaction ever that ever happened in these.
And actually redo some of them to make them work going forward. Yeah, he, he deserves a huge amount of.
Because the only way you can make the present day work.
Of course, we paid him handsomely.
Going back to the beginning and following every piece of property. So, um, but with that, um, why don't you come up, up front?
I feel bad. We don't have anything. Sue, you gotta make him something.
That's all right. They don't, they don't, they don't need anything. They're, they're public servants.
I'll give him the day.
Give him the day. That is Paul Con one of one. That's what he would say to me at homecoming.
Yeah.
Okay, you hit your bell. Call Mike? You know, Mike goes to county commission, but he doesn't come here. Where's Tom? Is he shadowing over me?
Yes. I'm having trouble seeing Ken. There we go. One, two, three.
Pick me up, Tom.
On three. One, two, three. Let me take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Been a while.
Yeah. I remember Eastwood. He did the one in the president's office for us, please. Go Raiders. Make the deposit. All right, that concludes our special presentation, uh, portion of today. I failed to recognize Director of Schools, Dr. Jeff Elliott. My apologies, Mr. Director. And our loyal board member, Dr. Jody Riggins. Thank you for being here and representing, uh, the school. It opens it up now for public comments. Is there anyone seeking to address the council during this moment? Or please raise your hand. I don't see anyone. So we will go on to our city manager's report. I mentioned to Councilman May, I've not ever seen it go from A to N as in Nancy. That's a long city manager's report. Good luck, Mr. Fivas.
We can be very efficient on this. But, uh, you know, without it being said, I, I do think that, uh, as we already talked about, our Whirlpool team, as, as, as Dr. Estes said, that we do have a lot of work to, to do. The, the next steps, um, that, that we're already having discussions with TDEC and, and working on the voluntary agreement that would go forward. And, uh, and we expect to meet with them, um, in the next little bit to, to bring back some more information. So, so everything seems positive, but I think, uh, that as, as Dr. Estes said, that this is not a time to, uh, relax because there's a lot of work to be done and, and our team knows that. So appreciate you recognizing this great group of people. Want to take a moment and, and earlier today, we had, uh, two ribbon cuttings. One was at, um, the Inman and Gott Street sidewalk. This sidewalk connects Mosby Park, um, all the way up Inman Street to Gott Street and has a new sidewalk that goes all the way down to Central Avenue and then back up the hill to, um, the College Hill Recreation Center. This project was part of a state grant, state and federal grant. It's a transportation alternatives grant where we paid about 80% of the, the funds. I do give Robert Barnell, who was the, um, project manager on this, manager on this, a lot of credit. In fact, he was able to even get another $150,000, two, 200 more thousand dollars doing some fast talking with, with the state and saying please and.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. So, so $200,000 is a, is a big deal and, uh.
It's a game changer for the.
So if you don't remember, and I know that Dr. Estes does, that there were actually, that the sidewalks were completely broken up and you really couldn't walk and have any connectivity between, um, the Central Park or the Central Avenue area in this area. It allows for crossings at, uh, going across the street towards the Health Department. So, so I think the project certainly helps clean up the area, but also allows pedestrian opportunities. As you see in the picture, um, you see this is part of, part of the project. You see part of it up the hill was this, uh, was the, uh, Inman and Gott Street project. Looking down the hill, you see the Central project, which has two sidewalks on both sides.
It's the chain.
And, and this is the, the first of three phases on Central Avenue. Was asked today that, uh, we've, you know, been waiting to get this done for a while. The next phase will be from Edward Street or the railroad essentially going to Trunk Street, um, which we will, um, take care of that. Lee University is building their engineering building, um, at the same, at the same time. And then right after that, we will wrap up doing from Broad Street on Central. There will be a, a large traffic table right at that intersection at Central and what's Paul Con Avenue or Paul Con Parkway, excuse me. And, um, so, so probably over the next year is, is Lee. The reason is we don't want to do paving and then the, the amount of steel and the concrete that would be coming through that primary pathway. We don't want to lose part of the road during that construction project. So, um, that's, that's Inman and Central Avenue. The good thing about the Central Avenue project is that C D B G paid for pretty much all of this. Brian Beck was the engineer designing it and making sure that, uh, all the grades work. And we had, um, Public Works did some work out there and Black Construction did most of the, uh, concrete work and, um, we're very, uh, excited about getting that done. For those who have been around, that, that we've been waiting for a while to get, uh, Central Avenue at least started. Any questions on Inman or, uh, Central Avenue? Moving on to, um, at our next meeting on September 8th. We haven't determined a time yet. Uh, we need to talk to, um, Dr. Estes and since it's in his district to make sure that, uh, the time can work for other council members. That, um, it looks really great over there. We want to try to do everything we can to get the community involved in this, uh, really cool footsaw field project. That, um, you know, we're also redoing some stuff at Blithold Field to, uh, improve, um, the look over there as well. Item D, um, we have a indoor sports events and aquatic center community visioning meeting on September 18th at 5:30 at the Chamber. That that meeting, um, is actually part of our original contract that we had with, uh, Sports Facilities. So, so that money had already been budgeted and, and spent. So this gives us the opportunity to come in and do some, some further, get some further comments from the key stakeholders, from people in the community. Do an opportunity to, uh, connect with, um, with the community and, and have a jumping off point from there. Later in the meeting, later in the section, I'll go through kind of what our plans and updates are with that. But, uh, so that's September 18th at 5:30. Probably denote on your calendar that there's a, a chance that we may have, um, a meeting or some discussion before that, either with the hotel motel owners or, um, with the Chamber and maybe the county as well. So we're still working through some of those aspects. On item F, strategic planning session, September 22nd at 12:30. We will have, um, we'll be here and then we will, uh, kind of, uh, start our, our real, our budget process for next year. What are the priorities? What are the things that the council wants to accomplish? What are the, the goals and many of those issues? Then we have item G is a tour of the Cleveland Civic Center on October 13th at 11:30. The windows will probably be in the building. The temperatures will probably be more bearable as they're, they're working and they're working their way down the building. So up on, there's some good work being done on the fourth and fifth and fourth floor, but by that time, hopefully they're a little bit further along. The, uh, city council building is, uh, is, is being worked on and, and much further ahead. So, but that's slated and we'll, we'll invite, uh, the media and other people to join us for that. We have a little bit of a fall festival scheduled for October 24th at 6:00 PM. That's a Friday evening. Uh, we have some just fun things for some kids. It's only a couple hour event. And if you recall that we had the, uh, the, uh, event, um, Silver Bells event last December. This is kind of similar to that, just a real quick opportunity for families to come and visit Johnson Park. We will also have some type of kiosk, um, and at the, at the Summit Building or the Cherokee Building to, to educate the public on what's going on and, and, and in that area. On I, we have a ribbon cutting for Jim Sharp Park on October 27th. They have a decent amount of work to accomplish by then, but they say that they'll be done by that time. And if we have weather like this, hopefully it will encourage that. Item J, we have a ribbon cutting of Mouse Creek Greenway Extension on November 10th at 12:30. This is at East Circle. Um, this is the next step and we hope to be able to continue this section all the way out to the soccer complex, but we have not celebrated this. It was, it's a nice little extension into some of the neighborhoods out there and kind of get a chance to visualize how, um, the Greenway can help support the pedestrian access on, in the Mouse Creek area. All right. Any question on any of those dates? If you run into a time or date that doesn't work, we still have some flexibility. So please let us know what, what you're thinking. please let us know what you're thinking and we'll go from there. Coming up, I want to talk about the project updates. We are, this is Jim Sharp Park. As you can see, as we talked about, that there's the grand opening on October twenty-seventh. They should be pouring out there on the right-hand side. You have the fishing pond. On the left-hand side, you have the playground. The Greenway connection into underneath the bridge is pretty well-connected. I think it's turned out much better than we anticipated. It's going to be a nice area with this nice pavilion for people to congregate. We'll have about a total of forty parking spaces for the trailhead and the park. And the playground will be very well-done as well. So, any questions on Jim Sharp Park? You may have.
Joe, I think sidewalk going down Candy's Lane is done. They've got it toward and set out somewhere to where it is. I'm impressed with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at it.
I get kids all the time asking when the park is going to be open. So, and parents as well, so I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I travel Candy's Lane all the time and it's amazing the number of cars that you see almost on a continuous basis in that parking lot. That whole area's been well-used and this is just going to add to it.
Whether we like it or not.
I just remarked to Councilman Goff that this is going to be hugely popular in this area. It's such a great addition to Councilman Cassidy's district and such a great addition to our community.
At any given time, you could see ten or twelve cars now in that parking lot. And people are beginning to walk from the neighborhoods using the sidewalk to it. We're seeing more and more of that as the weather cools off. I think there'll be heavy traffic this fall.
And we're getting closer to a breakthrough on getting the Greenway. Well, first of all, we have the mile and a half loop over along Freewill and Candy's. Then we're getting closer to getting the access to the right-of-way that would connect Candy's Greenway to Fletcher Park. And then, we've got a preliminary agreement to connect from Fletcher Park out to Harrison Pike and down all the way to pretty much that gas station. So, we're just not far from being able to connect the Candy's Greenway or Candy's Greenway to Mouse Creek Greenway when we get Phase Six done. So, you'll be able to have, when that happens, and I don't think we're that far from it is within reality, as long as we don't put another state grant in there. That we could be...
To slow us down.
Yeah. We could be a couple of years from having that, what would literally be, I think, twelve total miles of Greenway all connected, that you can walk from those neighborhoods over on Candy's Lane all the way to Walmart or all the way to Home Depot, rather.
Bill, I know you've been involved from the very beginning on this, but it's an incredible asset for the community.
Joe, I have one other question to you on the restrooms. Is it possible before the park opens that those restrooms could be utilized by the walkers before we do it? Can you look at that and see if it's possible?
The way that that will work is when the contractor gets completed, which they'll be done before us, then we have some cleanup work to do after that. When the contractor pulls off, we would have access to start opening things up. So, then there's, the park will probably not be fully completed and open, but that's when you might be able to open up the bathrooms.
I've asked some questions on that, so I would appreciate it.
Yep. Greenway cameras update. We're very pleased and thankful to Cleveland Utilities. We had a great meeting with them that they are planning to move forward by putting fiber into the Greenway. They've already actually started that in some way. Had to put a, cut through our outfield of one of our baseball fields to get that done, but we got it done. But what that will do, and it might seem like a small thing, it improves the connectivity, of course, the reliability of having fiber connected into everywhere in the Greenway. Right now, we have phone hookups and essentially remote hookups at every camera that operates them. That if we hardwire them to there, we can lose those charges every month to that. And that's why that's, that's an important element. But also, we talked about having call boxes on the Greenway. And I think, so we'll start having like a Greenway Park and Tinsley Park to where that if someone needs to make a call, that they will have an opportunity. Nowadays, a lot of people have cell phones, but not everybody, especially when you're And we've just got done the cameras all the way down to Tinsley Park. We are, do we have the ones, the other ones at Mohawk yet? No. So, our next step, we'll get the egresses off the Greenway from Mohawk and all these other areas. We think those are the areas that hit the most. And then, we'll put in the rest of everything out to Mohawk, actually out to East Circle. And then, we'll go back in the other direction towards Willow and get that wrapped up. And we hope to be able to do that by, hopefully by the spring and be a hundred percent wired up. You know, we, as I occasionally send you emails, that we do have a decent amount of crime deterrents and safety deterrents with those cameras and some of our other cameras. And it's been a wonderful public safety tool for everyone involved. Any question on Greenway cameras? Lastly, want to hit on that we are launching our Arts and Entertainment District. We've talked about it in the past. One thing that, that we basically will have a draft area and it's really from our draft area, from Central, pretty much over to the old Woolen Mill, kind of in that area. We will identify a committee to help work on establishing the Arts and Entertainment District and that should probably kick off in the next couple of weeks. We will ask for a council representative to be on the Arts and Entertainment District. One of the questions that we get, well, how is this different than Main Street? Is it's kind of part of Main Street, but it's supposed to be just a higher level of focus on bringing in arts and entertainment-type industries in some of these redevelopment areas? I would say it's probably more akin to a redevelopment area to focus resources and try to get these investments moving forward. So, once the committee's established and has started looking at that, we'll bring back reports on putting that together. The next thing is the...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
This may be too early, but do Arts and Entertainment Districts have different TIF expectations, requirements, rules than other districts?
We're going to put, it's pretty much how we want to put it together. So, from the redevelopment standpoint, we want it to have like some special redevelopment tools or opportunities to somewhere. You might have, you know, just different opportunities and to help focus on bringing in arts and entertainment businesses, specifically restaurants. Sounds like we have a new restaurant moving into the Catch location, which is a wonderful thing. But we need to help support some of those smaller businesses without making them, giving them advantage over other businesses. But, you know, this is an area that has seen so, in many areas, has seen so much growth from where we were several years ago. And really, the part of this is trying to get it extended over to the Woolen Mill and have this consistency area. One thing that you may have is you'll probably have some more public art. You'll probably have some more fun, kind of interesting things going on in this area. And it's really just what the committee and what they figure out will be in the future.
And Councilman Estes, I was in a meeting this morning with Representative Howell and the establishment of these kinds of districts also allows for the assistance from ECD and some of their funding. So, he was very encouraged that we were doing this and beginning that discussion today.
Last thing to hit on is the indoor sports events and aquatics center. Obviously, on September eighteenth, we have that visioning, community visioning session at the Chamber. That our goal is to start the process of coming up with our team that will help us work through that as far as an architect, as far as a lot of the other pieces. And, you know, just like a lot of the things that the council has done, is we want to move quickly and start working on the things that the council adopted in the spring. And this would be part of that. So, just to let you know that you'll start seeing items on this as far as moving forward fairly quickly and we'll put more context to that coming up in future meetings. Mr. Mayor, if you don't have any objection, I can go and start talking about the agenda. Six A, we have a public hearing to hear public comments concerning the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five K-First and Validated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Then we have item six B is a public hearing on Williams Street from R-one to PUD. This is basically the same public hearing that we had before. Then you have item seven A, you have a request concerning the City of Cleveland for the adoptance of an ordinance for the municipal code. Two for UR-one urban single-family district as a zoning designation creates the urban R-one. Seven B, which is connected to that, essentially, and the council had already voted on this previously, is basically amend the municipal code to delete a section and then replace it with a new UMUC urban mixed-use corridor zoning district. Then we have seven C, which is zoning ordinance twenty-five forty-two, request to, request by multiple property owners consolidation or for consideration of an ordinance to zone twenty-two acres or more of property located at Williams Street from R-one to PUD. Item D is zoning ordinance twenty-five forty-four, concerning a request by HAD Properties for consideration of ordinance to zone about three point two seven acres located at Bauer Lane from IH to R-two. Item E, zoning ordinance twenty-five forty-five, concerning request by Alvin Calhoun to rezone point one eight acres or less for the property located at eight hundred Harrison Pike CH Highway Commercial to R-three. He's adding on to that apartment complex there by the gas station. Item F is ordinance twenty-five forty-six, concerning request by the City of Cleveland for consideration of ordinance to amend municipal code Annex C to delete tabs. This is some of the cleanup language that we had talked at the last meeting. Final passage, ordinance twenty-five forty-seven, concerning request by the City of Cleveland to, ordinance to amend the municipal code. And this is more of the cleanup language that Robert and you guys had talked about the last meeting before this. Item H is a request by the City of Cleveland to amend the municipal code, revise two point three point one, uses allowed. Again, more cleanup language. Item I, resolution twenty-five seventy, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Civil Environmental Consultants for consulting services for Stormwater Division to conduct a visual stream assessment as required by TDEC. Jonathan, I had had a question posed to me, is that this does not cover all the streams in the city.
The ones that are impaired.
Just the ones that are impaired? So, that wouldn't include Candy's Creek?
No, Candy, most of Candy's in the city is not considered impaired.
Can I ask the question so that they know, like, what's considered an impaired creek?
Based on different criteria, TDEC has, they listed, Candy's used to be where they came off. There's a, based on durability, there's a lot of factors that's the main...
Thank you. Item J, twenty-seven seventy-one, authorizing the city to purchase turnout gear with Viking life savings equipment due to masters in our government cooperative agreement. We have this so that we get the best deal on the cooperative agreement for purchasing turnout gear. Resolution twenty-five seventy-two, the mayor to sign an agreement by AT&T for utility relocations on Church Street from First Street to First Street so that you have the power lines on First Street, which is out in front of the police station, all the way down past Inman Street to the other First Street. And all of that will go underground and this, and part of, one of the lines is AT&T, which is a whole side next to Pinnacle Bank, is that they're going to take all that and there are already underground system underneath there and put that underground, so all of that will go away. This is what AT&T would charge for those services. Item L, approval of the caper that you'll have a public hearing on. Item M is the basketball and cheer uniforms. We put that out to bid and we got really strong bids on that, so that's a benefit. We have a bid report on drainage pipe. Then we have authorizing a lease agreement with the Bank of Cleveland for the parking lot located on Broad Street. Then we have the change orders for Jim Sharp Park, Tinsley Park and the Cleveland Civic Center. Then we have an appointment for the Shade Tree Board, Andrew Dinsmore, to fill the unexpired term of Mylan Blake. They expire on August twenty-sixth. Appointment of the Shade Tree Board, Jimmy Isom, to fill the unexpired term of Tim Henderson to expire on August twenty-sixth. With the appointment of the Shade Tree Board, Cindy Richardson, to fill the unexpired term of Ray Gardner, to expire on August twenty-sixth. Then you have the unfinished business, which is ordinance twenty-five forty-three. This is the Springbrook Community Developers rezoning. That motion failed four to two at the last meeting. Then you have new business. You have ten A, which is amending the municipal code by adding a new chapter prohibiting camping or sleeping on public property within the city limits of Cleveland. And happy to address any questions with that. Item ten B is amending Title III, Chapter Four, Section Three dash four oh one of the municipal code pertaining to court costs for the Cleveland Municipal Court. This increases those court costs. And item C, ordinance twenty-five fifty-one, amending Title V, Section Four, Section Five forty-three, five forty-four and five four oh seven of the municipal code to incorporate recent changes to the changes to the city Cleveland's purchase procedures manual. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fives. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the council on the manager's report and review of the agenda? Good, your lucky day, no questions. Takes us to reports of council members. We begin today in the 5th District with Councilman Goff.
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Webb?
No report, Mayor.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah, Joe, Weston Hills Drive. I'm getting a report from neighbors over there, the potholes, I mean, they're reporting, they're thrilled with the new four lanes being up and all good, but potholes at the base when they're going into their neighborhood.
David's here, and he had had conversations, I think, Councilman Cassidy had raised this issue...
I also referred him to.
Previously.
I referred to David on that.
And I think they were going out to finish it this week, right? That they're going to go out and the contractor, or did you call them too, Jonathan?
Yeah, Jonathan called.
So, Jonathan called them and basically told them they need to be out there this week.
They said they would, yeah.
Right. Be out there on that.
They said they'd be done by Thursday.
Okay. What was the report you got, Jonathan?
They'd be done by Thursday. Was it raining?
Due to weather.
Yeah.
On what?
But it's not going to rain, so I think it'll be...
They're hoping to complete the whole project, but they said, correct?
Yeah, they were going to finish the thermal stripping and all that by Thursday.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenzie. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Estes?
More quick things. Jonathan, please stay on Phase 6 of the greenway, please. Whatever TDEC, whatever's going on, if there's anybody that can help you, whatever, let's reach out and get some help to get that in our hands, just like as soon as possible, please. On the sports arena, Seth, this might be under you. I don't know who does social media, but let's put that on our webpage to get people out. I've enjoyed hearing the public's comments on different things. I don't know exactly how we plan to publicize it.
We're intending to build a whole new page and coinciding with this public visioning thing.
Okay.
And start building the public comments and public information to make sure people get correct information.
Well, on that, Chris, I don't know if this falls under you or whom, but the webpage is more robust, and it's been easy sending people links when they contact me. And it's just been, I know you gauge our own web traffic, and so you know where people are landing. But it is so much better than it was a couple of years ago. And so, let's just stay on that. It's been great. Couple positives to, again, Jonathan, this might be you. Mouse Creek neighbors, people at Mouse Creek love the greenway access. I mean, I've gotten multiple calls from the Greenway Committee. People just really appreciate that connectivity, and that the city kind of has cleaned it up. And after floods, they come and they clean, you know, they really appreciate the attention that Parks and Rec have given it and that the access is there. And then another thing, my colleagues, I know some of you are on the CU board. A couple of businesses speaking language I don't understand, they're praising Cleveland Utilities' fiber. The gig infrastructure makes their networks work better than Charter or AT&amp;T that they had previous. And I'm not sure exactly how that works, but they were just really, they're very pleased with what CU is doing. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Cassidy?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman May?
Yeah, Joe, one thing. I have a person, every time I run into him, he wants to know about landscaping on 25th Street. And I tell him, "We're working on it." But I think he's getting really irritated with, "We're working on it." And I'm sure that that's up on your list, and I'm sure you've got some dates and times and...
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, we have put in a request for the state to approve certain elements of the project, which are some curves along, along some of that. And have we heard from them, Jonathan?
I haven't.
Have you?
No.
But that's been going on for a while, Joe.
Well, they work at a different speed sometimes.
Well, I know.
We'll make sure this week that we can try to push them on getting us an answer on the curbs and...
And probably while you're looking at it about moving the sign, you probably could tie it into the project.
Moving the sign down.
You know what, sign, yeah.
Welcome to Cleveland.
The welcome to Cleveland, it's in the wrong place.
It's a little alt, Joe, when you get off the interstate.
Askew. It's askew.
Yeah, that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you.
If I can, Mayor, one thing to that, when you go in that thing, if you look at the sign, it says, "Do Not Enter." So, from the other side, so it's kind of unique that you come in.
Do Not Enter, Welcome to Cleveland.
Yeah, it says, "Welcome to Cleveland," and then the attorney, he says, "Do Not Enter." So, I'm kind of like taking, okay, what should we, should we be coming in, or should we be leaving, or whatever?
To your point too, Joe, on 25th Street on J-Turns with the state, is there any status, Jonathan, on that? We talked about that about a year and a half ago. Is that still...
They have a design, and they're working on getting right-of-way from two, I think, two or three of them.
Okay.
And fast progressing through, that's part of the reason they're, they're wanting to tie all the...
All of it together?
All of it together when they do the J-Turns. We're going to be losing them. Several of the Caper members.
Oh, I was supposed to say that.
We got three new members on the tree board.
Maybe it's better now.
Yeah. Talking about creek myrtles, one other thing.
Sir.
Do we have a pattern that we're going to trim them to? I mean, some of them, I see they've been stripped at the bottom, and the top has got foliage. And then some of them's got limbs all the way down, and...
Are you talking about just the 25th Creek's myrtles, or all the creek myrtles?
Well, do we have a standard that we're going to go by citywide? Or are we just going to do each street by itself?
I don't, I don't fully, I don't know the full answer, but some of, I mean, we've run into some issues recently is that a lot of the creek myrtles were planted underneath utility lines because they're slower. But now that they've grown up, I think that we're trying to figure out what is the proper... So, I think you can have multiple different pruning techniques depending on if there's utility lines above them, you know, if they're out in the middle of, because those are beautiful creek myrtles out in the middle of...
We're talking about creek myrtles. Surely, we're not going to, electric lines, is that what we're talking about?
We're trying, well, Cleveland Utilities will cut them for us, and we're working with the tree board on what's the best.
Surely, we're not going to let them get that large, are we?
No, they're already there. I mean, they're up past the lines, just driving down.
Past the utility lines.
Yeah, just drive right down to Covey Street, drive down...
That's right, they are.
Like I say, are we going to let them get to that high, or...
We have, we have.
We have, yeah.
So, we're, there's an ongoing conversation on trying to figure out what, to your question, how do we want to react to this?
And Tom's on the tree board, and he said that should be before the tree board.
I'll bring it up to the tree board.
It's on the agenda tomorrow.
Oh, it's already on the agenda.
Look how powerful you are.
Yeah. I'm sorry I brought it up.
I'll report that to you, let you know what the state's...
All right, thank you, Councilman May. The only comments I was going to make, so Jonathan, thanks for the Thursday update on the striping, because I've gotten quite a few comments about the thermal striping on Highway 60. It's made it to the infamous "What's Happening Cleveland" site. There are 63 likes on the complaint on no striping so far, and 23 comments. So, it's gaining in its unfortunate popularity.
Did you add on there that it's a state project?
I thought about it, but Mrs. Brooke says, "Don't jump in that fight, Mayor."
Don't get involved.
I won't tell you the other part of that comment. And then the other, thank you, David, for being here today. I was stalled this weekend trying to get back to Cleveland and Metro Atlanta because they were paving six lanes down to one. It took me an hour and a half to get from the airport just to Cortlandt Street, if you know where that is downtown. Middle of the day on Saturday. I said to myself, "I've got to remind David Chealy to never allow paving during the day in the City of Cleveland like the Politt Project, which you did at night." It just makes so much more sense. And I commend you for that. And going forward, let's just make sure, because we want to mess. All right, it is 2 o'clock. If there's no other comments or questions from the council, we are adjourned until 3.